Shelley, you ready? Okay. Time is 6:30. We'll call this meeting from order. Mr. Buckle?
Yeah. Power heads, we come to you in prayer. We pray for your guidance as we make decisions for our community. Let us seek your wisdom and will as we go forward. May you watch over us as you always do. If it's Haley walks, we pray for all those who serve to protect us, both here and in Christ's name.
Mr. Buckle? All right. As I say every midi, rules of the form under effect, basically it's be respectful of each other. All right, next thing up, citizens' comments. Mr. Usher? You are, you are up. There you go. Yep.
Weeks of practice. Anyway, I wanted to apologize if I offended anybody last week, or two weeks ago. But I felt a lot of strain, a lot of pressure. And just to be, well, history, that Wednesday morning, the day after I was here, I woke up about 2:30, walked outside and it was bright daylight. They poured 12,000 square feet of concrete from about 2:30. And they were out there probably a good 20 hours, and I probably watched a great 18 hours of it. But I thought that was kind of a calming effect on me, to kind of know it's, it's a result. Not much you can do about concrete without a jacket. But that said, I'm just, I ain't got that camera. But I wanted to come over and thank you for sending Mr. Coker over. We went out there Friday, and within five, 10 minutes, we realized that what the county inspector has been approving as far as the silt fence erosion control is nothing but a sad case of throwing some silt fence up against the wall. Really needs to be done per the specifications. And that helped out quite a bit, too. So, the main reason I came in today was again to apologize to y'all if I offended anyone and to thank y'all for sending over Mr. Coker. I went down to the county today and asked them basically for the same things I've been asking for the last couple of months. One was for the silt fence, which they're saying that the county inspector found flaws in the municipality agreement between the county and your city. The clause or word or something that says that he is not responsible for it. And that the county, oh no, the county was passing that over to y'all as far as responsibility. So I asked-
To be honest with you, Mr. Usher, everything that you've described with us on that location, we've, we've looked at what our regulations are, what we can do because it's in the EBJ. And we've conferred with our city attorney. Everything we've told you about, it should be county responsibility. If they're trying to play the old push it back on us, I, I don't know other than to talk to Mr. Hildebrandt and, and we can show you where it says it's not our responsibility to. I feel bad for you. You come over here and you're such a gentleman. Every time we have a city council meeting, explaining what your heartache is and what your frustration is, and I get it. We're tied down because there are certain things we can and cannot do. And it's unfortunate. I don't, I don't like the fact that the county could be pushing it back on us. Because that's not right. I'm not trying to push anything on them. If it's my fault or my responsibility as the city, then we'll take ownership of it.
Well, thank you for the statement. And Mr. Bailey, our commissioner here in seat three, he actually came over and told me that it's y'all's responsibility and that y'all need to do your job. And I says, hey, just show me where it says in that agreement. I appreciate it. Which is exactly what you're asking for.
Yeah, because it's, it's one of those, if we've made a mistake because we don't know about it, we'll take ownership of our problem. But if there's, if there's something there that he was able to show you, I would ask you to give it to Mr. Coker and then him and Conrad could look at it.
No, he hasn't, but I asked him for it. And says he will, but again, I'm passing that on you.
Right.
I don't look forward to being presented. But they, their position now is in your ballpark. That's exactly what they told me.
Well, and I'm, I'm sorry you're having to go through this.
Me too. Ping pong ball never had it dropped. Anyway, so the other one was the plat which y'all are working on. Then the other thing was the sewage, the original onsite sewage facility for the residential. I was asking for proof that it was decommissioned per the state regulation. And no, that I haven't received either. But that's pretty much it. I've stated my same position over. And again, I do thank y'all for sending my mic out. I felt a lot more comfortable having someone confirm what I've been believing for the last few months. Not really getting any help from the county. That's pretty much all I had to say. And thank you, and y'all have a great weekend.
Yes, sir, and thank you. All right, if we don't have any other citizens' comments for tonight, it's 6:37, citizens' comments are closed for the evening. We'll move on to 5.1, 5.2, the consent agenda. Is there any reason to pull either one of those off? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'm just gonna abstain on the minute.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve agenda items 5.1 and 5.2 on the consent agenda.
I've got a motion, but I'm second.
I'll second.
All right, if there's no discussion, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, and show that Brian abstained on the first one. On the second one, on 5-2, it's unanimous. All right, we'll move on to 6.1. Discussion and consider adopting the city policy for procurement, purchasing, and procurement of chapter 252 of the Texas Local Government Code. Is that the one that you guys have been working on? Okay. I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I brought the Texas Local Government Code. I could have just had our city attorney stand up and he could quote this for us. But being, being the type of city we are, being a general law city, we're subject to chapter 252 of this code. So what we've been doing has been subject to the code. However, this purchasing and procurement, I think if you've read through portions of it, it helps us move into a home real city process. It helps employees to know exactly what they can and can't. It talks about all the different, well, all the different spending limits and how much they are. That's something that the council can, especially as a home real city, work with those numbers. But know that the information that's in here, that you read in the ordinance, is, comes directly from here. As well as I have a document that TML has put out that sort of pulls it out into layman's, if any of you, it's called procurement laws made easy. So it's the same, it's the same type of thing, I mean, for dummies or whatever. They've just taken it out of the code and put it here. So it's easier to explain. It's like why, what's this and what's the for. Sometimes reading state code, it's harder to understand that. So that helps, too. But with this procurement code, it talks about some definitions, who's the governing authority of it, the purpose and the scope, and what you do in emergencies. A lot of times, it's, it's what you can and can't do because you're not thinking about procurement or purchasing. You're thinking about the emergency and getting it done. It talks about the, all the acronyms, the RFPs, the RFQs, the RFIs, these, when you use them, when you don't use them, when you can use them. So, but at the threshold of 50,000, that's one thing that a lot of the chapter talks about. Is if you spend 50,000 and above, that's required to have formal sealed bids and, and follow certain process. Underneath that, it's, it's different. And this is broken up to, to talk about $0 to $1,000. And you state that you can use the P card, purchasing card, or, or a purchase order system. We don't have a purchase order system, but it's something that definitely is, as the city grows. That's why it's included. I think at one time, they definitely changed. So that's important to know. We don't have a formal purchasing and procurement office. You see, the city administrator's name there a lot of times. So all those would come through the city administrator's office or designate. So as a department head, they'll have, they'll, based on the circumstance, they'll get the permission to do that. It also talks about professional services, and they're real specific about professional services like hiring an attorney, engineer, other kind of process that we take through there.
Real fast on that, too. 252.0224, there are a few things that we'll use a lot, such as attorney, architects, engineers. Those are exempt from the 252 bids, which is FYI, you wouldn't do an RFP for that. Those are what we talked about for 2254 of the government code. That's what the Project Services Act. So those types of services, you want a request for qualification to designate the project with particulars. People were saying, I'm qualified to do that project. Here's why and here's how. If y'all remember, there was a few times we had to go through, speak to someone, people who worked on a contract. We ranked them, one, two, three, or had a contract and you can't do the first one. Clearly no, no, we wanted the second one. So that's what, that represents that way.
No, and, and actually, our, our city attorney quoted, almost word for words, some of that code in that area. So it, it basically is professional services. If you want to think overall, what is it? It's if professional services aren't required to have, go through that process. In fact, they're exempt. It also talks about public purchases and, and disposal of surplus property. Sometimes we get a little mixed up on exactly how we get rid of surplus property and those type of things. So this talks about that. And public purchases, the ability for city staff and others to purchase city equipment. And it discusses the broken, or not the broken, what they can. So basically, this is something that is just helping organize the city, helping them bring us a lot more professional. Helps the taxpayers understand that, that we take it extremely seriously in the, in the spending of, of public funds, which are a majority taxpayer funds, and how we care for it, how we use it, and the processes that we do. And it also has a place where if you don't do it, the consequences there are.
Got the checks and balances.
Checks and balances. But it's something that we can have in 14 pages. We have it, the whole code here, and then we have the for dummies here, and then we have our, our thing that, that speaks specifically from, from 252. There's also an ethics section that I did not include in here, but it's something worth repeating and worth knowing that the code talks about ethics in purchasing as well.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the city policy for procurement and purchasing in accordance with chapter 252 of the Texas Local Government Code.
I've got a motion. Do I have a second? I'll second. All right, any discussion?
Yeah, I have, I have a couple of questions on this. Yeah, earlier on when we passed that ordinance in regards to purchasing vehicles and other properties. And actually, I had spoken to Lisa about going through this process, but she, you know, she left prior to us being able to go through this and accomplish this. On page nine of the handout, you have purchase approvals. And it's, I'll just quote it, "For bids that fall below 49,999.99, the city may issue may approve the purchase. For bids above that, the city, the city council has to make the approval." Is there any, is there any capacity for modifying the amount?
Yes, sir. As, I mean, the 50,000 is set and statute. Can't play with that. You can't drop it or raise it to 60,000, basically. But you can go under it. So if you wanted that 50,000 to drop to 40,000, where we have sealed bids and go through that, you can do that as a city council. It's, your ability as a, as a home real city expands your ability to do some things. But with these, the, the one basic thing is you can't go more than, but you can go less than. So that, so if you wanted to drop as a council that to 25, whatever, 25,000, whatever, from the 50,000, you can do that, as well as the other two thresholds, or three thresholds that are in there. You have the ability as a council to do that. I apologize for not mentioning.
That's, that's a point of discussion that we may have. And I can entertain, you know, the recommendation for maybe that discussion. That's all I can say on that. I, I don't like the $50,000 threshold, basically a little bit less than that. Yeah, I just feel a little uncomfortable with a smaller city like this. It's a substantial amount of money that you're really talking about. If we were in New York City, that's, that's inconsequential.
But let me, let me ask this. If we adopt it today, this, this using that purchasing policy, we can still come back with discussion of bringing that down, that, that number?
The council is always able to bring that in and to, to change those numbers.
And it may not be that we bring it down. It may be that we get checks and balances. That it has to meet these checks before you can approve it if it's under 50,000, you know, like a check.
Well, I mean-
If it meets these three questions, four questions, then he, he may be authorized to do it. Versus if it doesn't meet these, you know, hypothetical three questions, then it has to come to us to get approved if it's under 50,000. You see what I'm saying? We don't want to have to call a special meeting every time if it's an emergency and these, it meets the parameters that we're allowing. But I agree, we need to have that discussion. And, and figure out what that, that number is, so.
And that's fine. So, you know, we can go ahead and vote on this today. The other, the other question I had is I'm not so knowledgeable. On, on page 11, they're talking about bonding. And what's a performance bond? And how is that applicable to a contract in excess of 100,000? And what's a payment bond that is in excess of 50,000? It's in the middle of the page under bonding, page 11.
Could you give me a little explanation?
Yeah, a performance or payment bond is, is requiring, like if you have a, somebody come in to fix your roads or streets, or to do some type of water line fix or utility fix.
So is it just an insurance policy?
It's an insurance, yeah, that you go back and, 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 and check the process and make sure they did it right. And sometimes you give them a one-year, two-year, three-year performance bond that that has to stay in that good if it's, if it's broken up in those, in those time periods. You go in and inspect it and you keep 5% of the money, and you don't remit it back to the developer until after three years, if you want it, on some areas. And then the city goes out and inspects it, and he asks, he or she needs to make the corrections. And then you finally remit back the, it's a small amount, but it's an amount, so they do it right.
It keeps them honest to a small company.
What, what also is each construction company will have a bond rating. And so if there are claim, a lot of time insurance, or the contractor will do whatever they can so that you don't make a claim on the bond because that affects their bond rating. How much they can qualify for, what deductible is, similar to, but not exactly the same as insurance. So we have that option, year, one year, two years, whatever it is, to make a claim on that bond. And so what that does is, hey, whatever the amount is, and usually it's for at least the amount of the project. And so, hey, you know what, this is gonna, we estimate this is gonna cost us these mistakes, the effective work, the poor performance, whatever it is, the credit materials that you've used, that's gonna be $65,000 to remedy that, that you, so we make the claim on the bond for 65. So it's not a perfect world because, say, streets, when you're building streets, you're not gonna see any street that's even halfway built. Spalling, heaving, things like that, problem, normal problems with street. You're gonna at least go a good eight or nine year before you're gonna have any of those issues. So it's not completely perfect. I mean, it's gotta be, but I have seen it happen. It's gotta be a pretty crappy street for it to have problems within the first two years. But I have seen it happen before, so it's good that you at least have that. So that's, that's what those are for. We require those of contractors that are gonna enter into a public works project like streets, utilities, what the contractor says.
Very good, thank you. I think also what city attorney Hallis saying, I've been on somewhere, there's a freeze thaw cycle of streets. And you, it's, it's asphalt management and asphalt law that you can't pour asphalt unless it's 50 degrees and rising. Because the ability for it to, to merge together and to stay that way in an elongated time period is lessened under 50 degrees. So we have those performance bonds. It's like, okay, if you're gonna do that or you show up and they have the road all done and it's 45 degrees or whatever, you come and say, you're gonna have to do it again if it doesn't, if it doesn't stay together. So the city has a way, so the developer just doesn't finish in bales.
And you wanna make sure that we've got something like that. I've handled situations where the, the old PCA, the Portland Concrete Authority, back in the day was, was the, because you always want a saw cut. You actually want to cut the concrete when you're making streets. The thing is, it's gonna crack, but the way you saw cut, it's gonna crack where you want it to crack. Their rule was no sooner than four hours, no later than 13 hours. Or four hours too soft after 13 hours. Well, it's a problem, say, if you're gonna do it in the middle of a rainstorm, why would you pour the concrete in? So there are delay issues, there are weather concerns. And if they want to take, a contractor takes a shortcut, I mean, obviously, that's a risk that we have to take, but they have to take that risk, too. So if they can't, if they saw cut outside of that timeline and there's damage, well, that's directly related to a poor unworkman, a, a, and not a poor and unworkman-like performance, which would be exactly what you would make a claim on the bond.
Thank you.
All right, there's no other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Show that unanimous. Move on to 6.2. Consider approval of sanitary sewer easement for the proposed Brookshires project.
Mayor and members of the council, this is something that, excuse me, both 6.2 and 6.3 has been before you. And I believe in May of 2021, it was never approved. I think it must have been tabled or something. The, the developer approved it, and now when they're, they're ready to go, they want to acquire property, Brookshires is, is ready to do it. This gives them a 20-foot easement, or gives us a 20-foot easement for the placement of a sewer line if we desire to place a sewer line, which we already placed. But for us to maintain it, and, and I mean, if there's any maintenance or operation stuff, so.
And I would advise, very little discussion on this in open council room. Take it in executive session. If you don't want to have too much discussion on it, you're fine. It's your call. I would recommend that.
Also on the, also on these next two, I left the red lines in there so you can see any changes from the initial time that you looked at it to now.
Because we, don't, we do have a resolution 20, 22, 03? Oh, that's the one you're-
We do, and this is, this is just, they didn't have any of this, and they, they're very anxious to get it so they can move forward on the project.
So the bottom line is, we had said that their share was gonna be $30,809 in that resolution, but they're actually going to give us $39,000 and change. 39,123.
Correct, but also our city attorney made it, they also had a thing that, that stated, a section in there that stated that all other commercial ventures would have to follow this path. Well, it doesn't tie their specific agreement to the, and he had that, their attorney take that out. So it's no longer there.
And just, and I did make some red lines that, as far as I know, that they have accepted. But I have to say, I was going last week for TML, and a lot of the credit for this, pushing it through, is to Conrad. I, I just, because I was tied up and I couldn't do it, so Conrad gets a lot of credit, in my opinion.
So have they coordinated on this yet?
Yes.
Brookshires?
Yes.
They've signed off on it? Once we sign it, and then they'll sign?
Yeah. All right. Well, we gotta do each one individually, so I'll entertain a motion on 6.2.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the sanitary sewer easement for the proposed Brookshires project.
All right, I've got a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I've got a motion in a second. If there's not any discussion, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All right, move on to 6.3. Consider approval of the agreement for sanitary sewer improvement for the proposed Brookshires project. Entertain a motion on that.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agreement for sanitary sewer improvements for the proposed Brookshires project.
All right, I've got a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I've got a motion in a second. If there's not any discussion, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Show that unanimous. Move on to 6.4. Consider approval of ordinance 2022-10, amending the comprehensive zoning, ordinance and zoning map of the city of McLean and Chisholm, Texas. Herefore amended by granting a change in zoning district from SF 2.5 to a PD plan development zoning district, providing for 10 single-family lots on a 27.12 acre tract of land located generally at the southeast, at the southeast of the intersection of FM 550 and FM 1139, more particularly described hereon in the city of McLean and Chisholm, Rockwall County, Texas, providing a appealing clause, providing a savings clause, and providing a severability clause, providing for a penalty of not to exceed the sum of $2,000 for each offense and providing for the effective date. Mike, is this one you need to talk on? You said everything. We've already approved all these. This is just the formality of doing the work, right? That we talked about. Okay, just making sure. All right, so that's 6.4. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 2022-10 as stated.
Okay, I was gonna say, you don't want to have to say everything I just said. I've got a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I've got a motion in a second. If there's not any discussion, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Show that unanimous. Move on to 6.5. This is gonna be another one where we've already spoke our piece with the council and wanted it to be fixed. This is just the formality. Consider approval of an ordinance 2022-11, amending comprehensive zoning ordinance and zoning map of the city of McLean and Chisholm, Texas, as heretofore amended by granting a change in zoning district from SF 2.5, single-family 2.5, and GB general business to a PD-
from SF 2.5, single-family 2.5, and GB general business to a PD plant development zoning district, providing for a mixed-use development to include retail, commercial, restaurant, and residential units on an 8.364 acre tract of land located generally at the northeast corner at the intersection of FM 550 and State Highway 205, more particularly described herein in the city of McLennan-Chisholm, Rockwall County, Texas, providing a repealing clause, providing a savings clause, providing a severability clause, providing for a penalty or fine not to exceed the sum of $2,000 for each offense and providing for an effective debt. Whew. I should be an auctioneer. All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance number 2022-11, as stated.
All right, I've got a motion, do I have a second? I've got a motion in a second, if there's not any questions or any discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Show that unanimous, move on to 6.6. Consider approving ordinance number 2022-12 of the city of McLennan-Chisholm, Texas, amending the comprehensive zoning ordinance and zoning map of the city of McLennan-Chisholm, Texas, as heretofore amended, amending by granting and change in zoning district from a combination of AG agricultural zoning district and GB general business zoning district to a GB general business zoning district containing 10.205 acres of land located generally at the southeast corner of State Highway 205 and FM 550, more particularly described hereon in the city of McLennan-Chisholm, Rockwall County, Texas, providing for a repealing clause, providing a savings clause, providing a severability clause, providing a penalty or fine not to exceed the sum of $2,000 for each offense, providing for an effective debt. This is the one for Brookshurst guy, so I'll entertain a motion on that.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance number 2022-12, as stated.
All right, I've got a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
If there's no discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
I'm sorry, I'm laughing because none of you want to have to. All right, move on to 6.7. Consider an approval of an ordinance number 2022-13, amending the comprehensive zoning ordinance of the city of McLennan-Chisholm, Texas, amending the comprehensive zoning ordinance and zoning map of the city of McLennan-Chisholm, as heretofore amended by granting a change in zoning district from AG agricultural zoning district to a SF 1.5, single-family resident zoning district requiring a minimum lot size of one and one-half acres of land on a 24.617 acre tract of land located generally at the south end of Savannah Hill Lane, more particularly described herein in the city of McLennan-Chisholm, Rockwall County, Texas, providing a repealing clause, providing a savings clause, providing a severability clause, providing for a penalty or fine not to exceed the sum of $2,000 for each offense, providing for an effective debt. I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion for approval of ordinance number 2022-13, amending the comprehensive zoning ordinance of the city of McLennan-Chisholm, et cetera.
Et cetera, et cetera, as written?
As written.
Or as stated?
As stated.
All right, I've got a motion, do I have a second?
Second?
All right, if there's not any discussion, all in favor?
Yeah, I, I just.
Oh, is there? Okay, you've got a question?
Wanted to be reminded, is this an extension of Heritage?
No.
It's adjacent to Heritage? Is it, is it adjacent to Heritage or proximate to Heritage?
Yes, it's one of the, one of the roads over there that we approved them to, to continue or add to.
It's next to, it's behind Savannah, Savannah.
I, I know where Savannah Hill is down, down there, so this is a new entity, they haven't proposed any, any kind of diagrams or any, anything of that.
My understanding, Mike, I think we already looked at all that.
Did we look at this last year, Michael?
We, we did the rezoning a couple of months ago, but this has been in effect, and we've been dealing with this. It's not part of Heritage.
Okay.
And what the council required with the change of zoning is that they make an agreement with Heritage for a second point of access, because this was a landlocked piece of property in the city at the south end of Savannah Lane, which is not in this. And just for your information, I have received an application for a preliminary plat, sent the report to, to Shelley on. Planning and Zoning Commission is going to review that preliminary plat for this property on the 18th. And it does include the access to Heritage and the signed agreement. So this is really the change in zoning, there is no concept plan because it's straight zoning. What they've asked for, you're going to see it when it gets here after the Planning and Zoning Commission takes a look at 13 lots, all of them one and a half acres or better. It looks like it's going to be a real nice extension, extension of Savannah.
You know, I would just like to ask a basic policy question. If we could perhaps get the zoning ordinance, uh, right when we get the, when we, when we have it up for discussion, it would be really helpful, because I think it would be more timely and we would, we would expedite the whole process a little bit. Because this has been quite a bit of time since we looked at these various things. I think that would be helpful, if that's feasible.
All right, guys, any other questions? That's a good question. If not, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right, show that unanimous, another last one. Consider an approval of ordinance 22, 20-20, or 2022-14, amending section 3.01.001 of Article 3.01 of Chapter 3 Building Regulation of the Code of Ordinances by amending the fee schedule, providing a repealing clause, providing a savings clause, providing a severability clause, and providing for an effective debt. I'll entertain a motion on that, that's the masterpiece.
Yep. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance 2022-14, amending the building regulations of the Code of Ordinances by amending the fee schedule, providing a repealing clause, providing a savings clause, providing a severability clause, and providing for an effective debt.
Oh my God, thank you. All right, I've got a motion, do I have a second?
I will second all that.
Um, any discussion, guys?
Thanks for putting in the food truck and the motion.
Yes, that's what we missed last time, that's why, okay. All right, if there's no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We've got all of those done. All right, now it's, uh, now we're down to the ingredient updates discussion and direction staff. Guys, I really don't have anything, I know school's going blow, we got to watch kids and all that. And the reason I say that is I've noticed in the last couple of days, just the main entrance into San Ambarati, we have, whether they're adults or teenagers, somebody's decided to spend a lot of money on tires because they've left a lot of tire marks up and down the main entrance where they've done donuts and, and spun tires and everything else. Tire's not cheap like they used to be, so somebody's got a lot of money, they're spending on, screwing tires. So we need to be careful and, and, and save. Right now, we got a lot of things going up, the Extreme Green Event is this Saturday from 8:00 in the morning until 12:00 or till noon. You, they have to provide like a utility bill or something to show people, residents, correct?
Yeah, just, just anything to show them.
But we've got that coming up, Halloween's right around the corner, Veterans Day, a lot of stuff's coming up, guys, so start throwing it on your radar, I know we've got a big shindig here for Veterans Day, to honor our veterans. Halloween, we're going to have trunk retreat or however they say it, right at Fire Station. You know, a lot of things going on, so that's all I have. I really don't have any direction, because you guys pretty much stayed on top of everything, I don't have to remind you of anything. That's all I've got, beyond that, I think.
I just have the, the most amazing thing, just happened in a text that I just received. At 6:00, I asked Daniel Lewis, one of our firemen, if he could install the bricks for the brick campaign, and I went through the whole thing. I just, I just got a text and he's already finished. So he's installed the bricks for this year, so we're really commendable for him, because that cost the city nothing, which is great.
Yeah, he's a, he's a good, he's a good person.
Thank you, Daniel.
I think that's it, we don't have, we don't have anything else. Being that we've met everything that's on the agenda, the time is 7:09, meeting adjourned. Thank you all for being here. And folks, normally we have a few more people here, you guys got the privilege to be in here all by yourself.